Good evening and welcome to the regular school committing, a meeting of the Greenfield Public Schools. It's Wednesday, June 10th, 2020. Call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. We are holding this meeting fully remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts, March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Uh, we are live with GCTV as well, and they are recording. Is anyone else who is on the line recording this evening, please identify yourself now? Make sure you're not on mute to identify yourself. Okay, I'm not hearing anyone. Um, I would like to start with a roll call. Member Johnson, are you on the line? Are you on mute?
All right.
Okay.
Hi Glenn.
Hello.
Can you lead us for the roll call?
Of course. Member Karen.
Yeah.
I saw her join, but.
Oh, did you say, sorry, you glitched out for a second.
Yeah, member Karen.
I'm here.
Vice Chair Ekstrom. Uh, Secretary Johnson, that's me. I'm here. Chair Poiety.
Here.
Uh, member Wall.
Here.
Mayor Weeda Gardner.
Here.
All right, member Hollins, have you joined? No, member Hollins. Other than that, we're all here.
Thank you. We'll move right into the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the draft minutes from two previous meetings, May 13th, 2020, which was our regularly scheduled May meeting, and May 26th as well. Do I have a motion to approve the May 13th meeting minutes?
So moved.
Uh, member Karen?
Yep.
And a second from member Johnson? Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. We'll have to do a roll call vote.
Hi, this is Susan. Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, yay, I tried before and no one could hear me. Okay.
Oh, good. Did you have something about the minutes?
I got nothing. I was, nope, nope, I got nothing.
You just want to make sure we can hear you. That's perfect. I love it. Um, so let's move to a vote to approve the May 13th, 2020 meeting minutes.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yeah.
Member Hollins? Still not here. Secretary Johnson, I'm a yes. Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weeda Gardner?
I was not there, so I'm going to abstain.
All right, the motion carries.
Thank you. And we'll do the same. I take a motion for approval of the minutes from May 26th.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so I've got, uh, member Ekstrom and member Johnson.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins? Still not here. Secretary Johnson, I'm a yes. Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weeda Gardner?
Oh, I feel bad. I wasn't there either, so I'm gonna abstain.
The motion carries with five yeses, one abstain, and one absent.
Mayor Weeda Gardner, I've heard you were not only a little busy, but maybe that a little bit injured as well. So your excuse.
Well, thank you. Well, I, I wasn't for either of those meetings, but I was busy.
We'll just go with that.
But I'm injured now.
I hope you're feeling better each day.
Uh, each day gets a little better. I have physical therapy tomorrow. They're about to find out what a terrible patient I am.
For those on the line who don't know, the, the mayor, um, has, has broken a bone. And yeah, not fun, especially in this humidity. Not fun at all. Okay, so we're going to move into public comment. And I understand there are two people already who are on our list who have indicated before the meeting started that they want to be, uh, recognized for a public comment. Each person will have three minutes to speak. I would ask member Johnson, would you be so kind as to time the three minutes for us?
I will.
Thank you. And, uh, so when I call you, you will state your name and address for the record, um, and you will have three minutes to speak on whatever you'd like. And my first person is Kia Burton King.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kia Burton King, 27 Riverside Drive, Greenfield, Mass. I am speaking as a parent this evening of a rising fourth grader and a rising seventh grader. It saddens me to learn that we have let go of one of the most amazing teachers I have met. Jamie Witherall taught both of my children. My son lived with her for third and fourth grade, and my daughter for second. I know this is a time of tough decisions, and we have a long road ahead, but I just want to let you know that you all have made a wrong decision, and I do not support it. Since the beginning of this pandemic and a combination of national protesting for racial justice and equity, my concerns grow as we, um, as, as I try to imagine what reopening schools will look like. Um, I continue to look at how our district is responding and preparing for next school year, um, to meet our children where they are at, and I hope that that's with love, respect, and compassion. I found comfort knowing that teachers and staff like Jamie Witherall are treasures and our superheroes, um, for this city, our district, and our children. Um, we are, we're just lucky to have them, and I'm sorry, there's an airplane going behind me, um, are lucky to have them, and those, um, and those are the faces that I expected to, um, see my children, my neighbors, in our future when they walked into the, to the halls of, um, Newton School in GPS, um, or if they have to turn on cameras this fall. Um, I can't believe that you have let her go, the seeds of love, kindness, diversity, um, that she poured into our students, the amount of fundraising, the amount of positive publicity she has brought to our school, the willingness to explore new curriculum, um, the openness to collaborate where in a field, um, it can be easy to keep the good stuff to yourself. She gives it freely. She gave it freely. Um, and this is how I learned that, I guess, we show loyalty and gratitude. She helped bring yo- a yoga star from the UK to my son's class, um, after countless extended school days. She was always there for PTO meetings. Um, she could be seen making phone calls to reach families, even on my child's roughness day, she called and reached out to me and responded with love and patience. How dare you? Did you think this would go unnoticed? Any district would be lucky to have her, and I know that they will grab her up in a second, and I can't find the words. Jamie, if you're listening this evening, I just want you to know that you're my strong woman. Thank you very much for listening to me. That's it.
Thank you, Kia. We appreciate your comments. And next on the list.
You're very welcome.
Is Eric Stone. Eric, you'll have three minutes.
Right on. Thank you. Um, my name's Eric Stone. I actually live, uh, 116 Strad Avenue in Florence, but I am a teacher at Newton School, uh, in Greenfield. So first, I want to thank the committee for hearing the diverse voices speaking in support of your Greenfield teachers. Uh, I have been working with children for 24 years, 19 of those in the classroom, and eleven of, eleven of those 19 here in Greenfield as a third and fourth grade teacher. Having experienced being, uh, rift earlier in my career, I'm well aware of the complexities involved in any reduction in force decisions, and the emotional toll the process takes on admin, teachers, and all staff. I am also, however, cognate that rules for layoffs exist for a reason, and that the math behind which layoffs are determined is in essence, just the math. Having said that, though, these are indeed challenging times filled with uncertainty. The proposed reduction in force results in a loss of talent that I believe will lead to increased uncertainty, a loss of intellectual resources sorely needed at this time, and will make it harder to meet the needs of our student population. We are in a tech-heavy and very tech-savvy world. The new generation of teachers is more well-equipped to navigate such a technological environment. Remote learning may well be the path we need to take as the future unfolds. As what we know schools-to-be moves into a territory fraught with unknowns, like a ship entering a storm, it seems nonsensical to let go of any talent and resources we have that can be a steady hand on the pillar. I implore you, as lovers of Greenfield, and a body who always has the best interest of our children in mind, to rethink the current path. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. That's the end of our list. Is there anyone else on the line that is interested in being recognized for a public comment?
Yes.
Go ahead, please. What, your name and, and the town you live in?
Uh, my is and I am from Greenfield. I live at 245 Conway Street.
I'm sorry, we missed your name. The line cut out. What's your name?
Oh, sorry. Erin Donnelly Drake.
Thank you, Erin. You're recognized for three minutes. Erin, are you there? Go ahead.
Everything is hard.
Okay, while we figure that out, um, and wait for Erin to come back.
Hi, hi, uh, school committee. This is, uh, Rachel Cummings. I think Erin and I were both speaking at the same time, which is why you couldn't hear us.
Okay. Is Erin still on the line?
Need a new one.
Erin Donnelly Drake, are you there and prepared to speak?
I think she's gonna try to call back.
Okay, um, is there anyone else who is interested in being recognized for public comment?
Uh, yes, this is Rachel Cummings, uh, resident of town of Greenfield and teacher at Newton School.
Go ahead, Rachel. You're recognized for three minutes.
Thank you. Uh, so I am currently a teacher at Newton School and have taught in the district for the past six years. Uh, this includes several years of being a classroom teacher at both Newton and GMS, and more than several years as a robotic coach here in Greenfield. Uh, there are days that this teaching job is incredibly hard, and I have weighed heavily upon my predecessors as conveyors of knowledge, support, and sometimes something as simple as a hug in a tissue. Uh, I have a, a lot of respect for the Greenfield greats. Especially those who have traversed the world of educating students as a whole, and especially those who I work alongside with me, provide the best education possible for students in Greenfield. Uh, that said, I do think that with this, with this new, uh, level of budget cuts, a lot of the folks who are losing have a skillset that a lot of the greats, my elders, who I have so much respect for, uh, need to work together with, um, the passion for teaching, but also embracing technology. And as I look at some of the cut lists, I just, I really want to urge the school committee to think about how education is changing, and how some of the folks who are cutting might be the perfect bridge between the old, the great, like the amazing teachers who I respect so much, and the teachers who have the technological ability to make this new learning possible. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Rachel. Previous to Rachel Cummings, we had recognized Erin Donnelly Drake for public comment. Is Erin back on the line?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me this time?
We can hear you. Please, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Um, so like I said, I'm Erin Donnelly Drake. I live at 245 Conway in Greenfield, and I am a Newton parent. Um, actually, uh, I'm leaving Newton after this week. Uh, my son's go- will be at GMS. Um, but I've been happy to be at Newton for, um, the years that he's been there since kindergarten, and I was really saddened to hear about some of the reduction in force. Um, I do understand, um, the budget scenarios that are quite alarming at this time, but I was definitely concerned when I heard that Jamie Witherall was, uh, a victim of that reduction in force. She has been a bright light for Newton School. Um, all the teachers there are amazing. Um, and Jamie has been exceptional. Um, it's just really sad to know that she's been here since 2013, um, through some really tough times at Newton, and, um, due to a very small, um, departure time, she is now reduced out of the school. Um, I should mention that Newton School has, um, raised over $160,000, um, at, through Donors Choose, and Jamie was one of the, uh, early adopters of Donors Choose, and she's an early adopter of many technologies and new initiatives. Um, Jamie alone has raised $50,457 in Donors Choose for Newton School. I added it up today. Um, that's 31% of all money through Donors Choose that has gone to Newton has been raised by Jamie. Um, she has brought really interesting and innovative programs to Newton. She attends PTO meetings, which we know is not an easy thing for teachers to do. Um, and I should mention also that, uh, Newton is a, I think it's 45% minority student body, and Jamie is one of the only classroom teachers of color in the entire school. It would be a tragedy to lose a teacher of color at a school like Newton School, um, really at any school, but especially Newton. Um, I really hope that the school committee can find, um, some money. I know that you can hi- often hire back students who have been, or teachers who have been risked, but this is when you lose talent. This is when you lose the teachers who are the best, and I would really hate to see Jamie go. I hope she's listening. She's an incredible teacher. She is so important for Newton and for the Greenfield schools, and, um, I hope that something can be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Is there, is there anyone else interested in being recognized for a public comment that's on the line? Okay, hearing none. We're going to go into the committee reports, and the chairperson's report is first. I'm gonna be, hello? Hello?
Hi, my name is Amy Dwight, and I also wanted to make a public comment.
Okay, you, we'll go back to public comment. That's fine. You have three minutes. Please state your name and your town of residence.
Hi, my name's Amy Dwight, 111 Meadow Lane in Greenfield. I have two students at, um, Newton School last year that will be at Newton School next year. Um, I'd like to thank everyone for their time, um, and just kind of touch on my views. I mean, I think you know that by now with all the comments that Jamie is an excellent teacher. She not only has, um, she's not only engaged, but she has passion for the whole school family and students who succeed, students and coworkers. Um, she, she has compassion, and she's passionate, and these are quali- qualities that you can't teach somebody. She has them. Losing Jamie, um, in her many unique skillsets would be devastating to Newton School, the PTO, the district, but most importantly, the children of Greenfield that are gonna be missing out on this remarkable teacher and role model. Um, she's a teacher that someone remembers for life, so I hope the committee can, um, find another way to fund this position. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Amy. That will be our last public comment for the evening. We're gonna move back into the committee reports. Um, as I mentioned, I'm gonna have a, a rather brief report. I have just three items I'd like to touch on, uh, for the committee as well as for the public. The first thing I want to talk about is, uh, related to the timeline for our shutdown for the COVID-19 pandemic, and the leadership response from specifically the state government. Uh, we are in a predicament. Uh, we, you will hear as well, I believe, from the city side, the municipal side of the city of Greenfield, that we're in a predicament. Uh, the pandemic turns out is very expensive. The pandemic leaves us in a really unfortunate position of having to choose remote learning, because right now there is no other option. And what we have found from, uh, our partners at the state level, uh, is that specifically from the DUCI, which is, um, the governing body at the state level for the, uh, K through 12 schools, and the Commissioner of Education for, for the K through 12, that their guidance for what to do and when to do it, uh, has been woefully inadequate. The cliche, I think, applies that is, uh, too little, too late. I will give one example of what we're talking about. Uh, they have issued guidance at each step of the way, and the guidance for how cit- uh, how school districts should do their graduation ceremonies came out just around Memorial Day, and every district in the state had already been planning for weeks, if not, oh, six weeks to two months, on what to do with their graduation ceremonies, absent any state guidance. And the, what it shows and has shown in each step of the way, that's just one example, is that we are, um, not getting a whole lot of helpful guidance, timely guidance, and we're certainly not getting any monetary resources at this time from the state level. They have not started the process of identifying what state budgets will bring to cities and school districts in fiscal year 21, and, uh, the, the state as well as local, local, um, areas have spent tons and tons of money that they don't have trying to dig out of this pandemic experience. Like I said, we are in a real predicament here, and we're not getting a lot of help. We will be looking at the local level to identify solutions and move forward because we have to start planning. I heard a quote recently that I'm going to mess up. I actually think it was maybe member Johnson that said it, something about, um, "You can't plan for everything, but the planning process is important," something like that, and I think that's what we're going to need to do at the local level, is to begin to plan as if we don't have the guidance from the state, and do our best to prepare for all sorts of, um, possibilities for summer as well as for fall. In case anyone is wondering, we've barely gotten the guidance for what to do for summer school programs for our students. Again, too little, too late from the state level. Um, I also want to recognize the impossible job and, um, attention to detail that it requires, uh, to, for the superintendent to make decisions, uh, around the reduction in force. You've heard people in public comment mention tonight about the reduction in force. Those are impossible decisions. Teachers are dedicated professionals who work incredibly hard and are under-resourced every step of the way, and to have to reduce them at all is just an impossible decision to make. And I want to recognize that the superintendent has done that, um, in, in a timely way based on, uh, the contracts with the, the unions and the timelines those require, um, as well as an attention to detail to make sure, um, that we're getting the information across to the correct people at the correct time. Um, and I want to recognize that. These are impossible decisions, and I appreciate, and I know the, I speak for the other school committee members as well, we all appreciate the feedback that we receive from the public. It's important for all of us to be involved in our schools and engaged in what's happening, and understanding why it's happening and at what times. The last thing that I want to just briefly touch on is by far the most important. Speaking of things that are happening at a national level and a local level as well, um, it looks like we are in the middle of a huge upheaval that has been a long time in coming with the systemic, uh, racism and systemic discrimination in our country. And I want to specifically note that there was an amazing outpouring of support for real structural change in Greenfield last Saturday. I would say, I was a spectator, and I would say that our March for Solidarity had at least 3,000 people in it. It was peaceful. Um, it was just a wonderful acknowledgement of how much this community, uh, in Franklin County care about these issues and fixing and righting all of these wrongs that have happened over generations in this country. There's a lot of work to do, uh, but I want to recognize that, um, you know, there were teachers, uh, students, staff members, um, people from, uh, across the, the leadership of, uh, the community, um, that were a part of the March for Solidarity last week, and it just shows that, um, in Greenfield, I do believe we can do the hard work. Um, and that is my report, and I'll, um, move right into the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chair. Before I begin my report, I would like to see if we have with us a special guest on the line, Dean or Josh. Are you on the line with us? If you are, could you unmute yourself, please? I'm gonna give them a minute and start with my report and come back to it. We have a, a recognition of a absolute community hero that we wanted to start our evening with. If they're not on the line, we will come back to them. This is in recognition of Dean's Beans, uh, who has been, I'm just doing tremendous community support to schools where, uh, food services are being recognized for the importance of providing childhood nutrition, and where Dean's Beans has been making donations to food service programs in public school districts. And, um, I asked them to join us so that we could publicly commend the, um, important role that they're playing in getting childhood nutrition during school closure, and they have made a donation of $5,000 previously to the schools, and they followed that up again recently with another $5,000 donation specifically for the food service program. Uh, this program allows all youth 18 and under to eat for free, and we've talked here at length about, um, just the absolute, uh, dedication of our food service staff to making sure our students are fed and cared for, even though our buildings are physically closed. Um, and if we are able to, uh, get that connection, we will come back to that later on. Um, I want to just touch briefly. I don't, we don't respond to public comment directly by policy, um, but I want to talk generally speaking about the budget and the budgetary process. Um, you may hear some background noise in my environment. I apologize. Um, this year's budget has been impossible. Uh, we care about our educators, and we rely on them as the backbone of what makes a school district, uh, function possible and work for our students. Um, this year, we had the reduction in the school committee's budget as necessary to meet the mayor's budget, and we made those reductions in accordance with discussion at the Budget and Finance Subcommittee and the Full Committee, contractual, um, guidelines in the Unit A and Unit C contracts and state law. But in addition, we have no idea what state funding will be or will not be available. Um, and there are still deadlines that you have to meet, and there is no asterisk in the law that says, "By the way, if there's a COVID-19 pandemic and the state legislature has not yet told you if you have, uh, the same level of funding, no funding, uh, what, what your funding is gonna look like, um, then you can go ahead and wait on this." And the committee, um, the committee has an obligation, uh, based on case law to employ anybody, that they do not give timely notice, that they, uh, may not have that position next year. Um, and the simple fact is, with 20% projected revenue decreases at the state level, we simply don't know if we will be able to continue employing everybody in the manner, uh, that we did this year certainly, and we just don't know what that budget will entail. Um, and in discussion with the committee, with the subcommittee and full committee level, um, what we've done is balance to the mayor's budget. what we've done is balance to the mayor's budget and then made additional reductions in force beyond the mayor's budget with 110% hope that we are able to recall each and every one of those people. These are absolutely some of our best and brightest. These are adjustment counselors and school nurses. These are teachers. These are special education staff and art staff. These are interventionists and math specialists and science teachers. They affect all of our buildings. And there's not any one of them that we could presently do without. These are integral positions that we need. Overall, there were 20 Unit A positions that were recommended for elimination or reduction. Those are teachers. And 23 Unit C positions, those are instructional assistants or behaviorists. These are real people, real jobs, that, as you heard tonight, several people speaking about the impact of even just one such teacher makes a tremendous difference. So this is a health pandemic and a and a economic reality that is unclear. It is completely unclear to us right now what the budget will entail. And so we are taking prudent steps in terms of our obligations as a district, at the same time, really taking every possible measure to bring these teachers back to work with our students. I've said this from the beginning, but for folks that are listening tonight that may not have heard earlier discussions, I believe firmly that next year we will need more staff, not less, that the student needs will be greater, not less, that the challenges of COVID and any type of accommodations for, whether it's in-person or remote learning, will be more costly, not less, and that the gaps that students may have that need to be addressed will be larger. None of those scenarios add up to budget cuts. They don't. They don't match. We have a double whammy of declining revenue and increased state needs, sorry, increased student needs. And for everybody listening, we agree with you. And we ask you to please, please, to join together to bring this kind of advocacy to the state level for the funding. We need federal funding and state funding. We need an investment in our schools to help keep everybody in the Greenfield Public Schools working and mostly to help our students through this extraordinarily challenging time. And we're doing everything we can within the tools that the district has. But we we do rely on state aid to a very large degree. And the community is also impacted. And we are cognizant of local revenue and being a good partner in the available share of local revenue. So I really want to thank everybody that cares enough about the impact an educator has made. And we are honestly, I can say I've had individual conversations with many of the people discussed tonight about how we might find a way to keep them. And that's my that's my heartfelt wish, and I couldn't agree more. And at this point, we do need that information from the budget at the state level to be able to proceed. And then I hope to be able to see these people all return to Greenfield. One note is that we work hard to eliminate positions where there's a retirement or a vacancy first. So please understand that we work very carefully to say if somebody is retiring, if that position can be eliminated and we can move people, that's always our first choice. And it's also what's outlined in the contract. It's good for people, and it we really try to influence the fewest number of individual teachers in that way. But as you can see, the impact is extraordinary even with that. And I want to end my report here by just talking about the restorative practice and restorative circle work that's taking place. I want to echo the chair's statements. There will be an op-ed appearing in the local paper that was authored by the Collaborative for Educational Services with the input of Greenfield and other member districts that we are as as a school community, school superintendents are signing on to and really trying to express our support for social justice, education, anti-bias education, and for the importance of the role of public school systems in bringing about systematic change, addressing systemic inequity, and helping create environments that are safe for all students. And so that's something that we hope to move forward. And I know will be discussed by this committee tonight. But we've really been focused beyond the statement level. We've really been trying to focus on what can we do for students. So today at Greenfield High School, the high school staff held a restorative circle for social justice focused on racial equity. There's been training going on for for teachers and staff. And we've been working on expanding existing initiatives. Whereas I think four or five years ago, when we were beginning restorative practice at the high school, you know, that was a tremendous investment in a new way of thinking, a new way of going about things. And today, those practices are part of the culture of the high school. They're a way that educators and students can connect so that when national and local events take place that require that level of support, that's a tool that's at the ready. I will say it is more difficult at a distance. It is harder to connect with students and the community. And we do need to hear from from people. And we do want very much to provide supports to our students and our families and our staff at this difficult time. So I'll end my report there. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any questions for the superintendent from the school committee? Okay, so hearing none, we'll go right into the Subcommittee reports. And let's have Health and Safety report out first. Member Karen?
Hello, good evening. Well, so we talked about a lot of really important things, a few that have already been talked about tonight. First, we have great reporting from the Eliza from the Food Services Department telling us what amazing work they've all been doing. I believe she said they've served 80,000 meals in this time. And she gave us an update about how they're helping people who have gotten the P E B T cards. For people who are unaware, it's a pandemic assistance for families who qualified for free introduced lunch. There were some people having a hard time learning how to use those. And the Food Service Group has been working to help those folks. She also told us about our summer food program and how that is continuing right through. There are a couple of changes in location or a location that will close for a week but then reopen to give our staff some break. But the services will continue right through the summer, including some fun raffles for some scooters and some cool stuff. That was a really wonderful report to receive. And I just think really important to recognize the wonderful work that has been going on. You know, we all think of food as such an important part of our lives, and it really, really is. And it also just gave our district and community a way to have a base with us and a way to touch in with us in person. And it was really wonderful. So that was great to hear. We also talked a lot about what happens next. As we both talked about, there's not a lot of guidance for exactly what our school year should look like in the fall. There's not even a clear indication if they're going to come up with a plan or if we should be making a decision completely on our own. They did come out recently with guidelines about P P E needs, what they expect each district to have, what they expect the cost of that to be. I've seen estimates of people saying reopening the schools with what the state says we need could cost a district an additional $1 million or more. So it's really an important time to think about the next step. And it's frustratingly lacking the information coming forward. It is really important to think about, and we are working forward anyway, regardless of what the state is telling us. The superintendent has been working to form a task force to come up with some plans. And as Glenn and Amy quoted Glenn very well, the planning process is a really important part of this, even if the state comes out with a plan that was not one of our original 12 that we come up with. Getting to plan the process, working together to figure out the small details will be an important part, and we will be that much more ready if they come with a plan. And if they don't, then we will have ours to pick from. The other two things we really talked about were two motions we made as a Subcommittee to make recommendations to the Full Committee. I believe the first one is on our agenda. And we, as a Subcommittee, recommended that we ask the Superintendent-in-Chief of Police, perhaps, to look through and reread our M O U for the School Resource Officer. It's time that that had a good look at it. But also, it's become to our attention that the funding for that position is not in the city's budget on their side. Usually, that position was split between the two. The school paid some, the city paid some. So it's time to figure out the next step in that. So we made that recommendation that it's important to continue our efforts of collaboration and coordination in that respect. And we also really felt that a way for us as a community to come together and a school committee to be leaders in the times right now is to have a social justice community forum, perhaps to hear from our community members. So we put forward a motion affirming our support of our school's approach of handling anti-racism and social justice and looking to perhaps have a community forum where we can be a listening body, a learning body, to see where we need to go next. And that was a very long-winded report, but there you have it.
That, thank you, Member Karen. That is the most I've ever heard you talk in a school committee meeting. So it's a you can put it on your Facebook Life Events tonight. I do think under, it sounds like your conversations were very timely and that at your Subcommittee meeting, it looks like you hit on at least two of the three new business items that we have tonight. So I appreciate that very timely work. That's great. And I think we can, when we discuss the anti-racism resolution, item C, I do think we can roll in what your committee is recommending in terms of moving forward with anti-racism and social justice. So thank you for that.
Yes.
Any questions for Member Karen from the school committee members about health and safety? All right, thank you for that report. Budget Subcommittee Member Ekstrom, do we, do you have a report? I can't even remember if we had a meeting. If you're talking, you're on mute. Member Ekstrom, are you there? All right, so we're going to move on if, once Member Ekstrom is with us. She wants to give a report from Budget and Finance Subcommittee, she can. So we don't have other reports. Under the Committee Reports, we'll move now into New Business with the first item under New Business, which is the principal appointment at the Discovery School at Four Corners. Superintendent Harper, what can you tell us? I think you might be on mute. Full disclosure, I texted the superintendent to tell her to put herself on mute. So it's my fault that she didn't unmute.
So Katie, if you think your report was long, mine resulted in being told to mute myself. I'm I'm tonight advising the committee that Casey Putnam has stepped into an extraordinary time to be an interim principal. Boy, oh, boy. This is a challenging time for everybody, veteran administrators. It's it's like dog years is like a nice way to say it. It's just a crazy time. But to step into it in an interim capacity and as your first role as an administrator, I think that takes especially dedication. And Casey has provided a stability and a sense of community to the staff and the families as best as possible in this remote situation. And what we we engage the community in a process early on. We had a series of community interviews. We had a lot of public input. We had a round of candidates. We decided to continue on with an interim candidate until we could really bring forth a pool of candidates that we felt best reflected in the process. And that simply did not feel appropriate, given the change of events with COVID, the inability to bring groups of people together for that type of community interview process. We were having, I forget how many, 20 or 25 of us in a room holding interviews. And most importantly, I want to continue the continuity and consistency that I think has has begun to develop under Casey's leadership at Four Corners. Because she is first and foremost an educator here in Greenfield with a number of years of experience, because she's licensed and qualified for the position, and because she has the support of her staff and the community, I've really seen a tremendous deal of leadership from her in the short time that we've been in this situation. And it it is the right thing to do to move forward and appoint Casey as the principal of Four Corner School so that however we open the school year next year, families can at least count on seeing a familiar face and the style of communication that they've come to expect working with her. So I'm bringing this to the committee tonight and to the broader public. It is not an item that the committee needs to vote on. But I certainly hope you will join me in congratulating Casey. After the evening's discussion tonight, I will enter into contract discussions with Casey. Hopefully, she'll accept it. I think she will. And it would be our our honor to have her serve as the permanent principal at Four Corners.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Harper. Is Principal Putnam on the line with us tonight? Do you know? Casey, are you with us on the line?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Look at that. You didn't, we didn't even have to tell you to unmute. You're like a pro. I see why they want to, I see why they want to keep you over there. Thank you for for being on the line with us. Thank you for stepping in at Four Corners and really doing such an amazing job in this very strange time. We, I really, really appreciate all of your extra effort. I thought I was getting more of the school committee chair hate mail this week, but it was actually all of your staff emailing to say what an amazing job you're doing and how they want you to be the full-time principal. So I don't know how much you're paying them, but good work. That was excellent. That's a joke.
I appreciate that they support me, and I am honored to work with them. They are a great staff, and it's been my pleasure to, you know, work with them. And they've been very supportive and helpful during this crazy time.
Well, thank you. Thanks for being on the line with us, too. Appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you.
Any school committee member questions for Principal Putnam or for Superintendent Harper on this subject? Or comments? Comments are fine, too.
I do.
Go ahead, Glenn, Member Johnson.
First of all, just so many appreciations for for what you're doing. It's taking on that level of leadership at this particular time is really impressive, and we're very grateful. And I'm also observing the kudos and appreciation and endorsements you're getting, we're getting by email as school committee members from your staff. So that's great. Do you want to share a little bit about your your vision for for the school and for for the coming year?
Sure. I think, you know, next year is going to be a really interesting year for the Discovery School because our Innovation School status is coming up for renewal and as well as our as our school improvement plan. So it'll be, you know, quite a task to take that on, especially considering all the unknowns happening next year. But I'm really looking forward to working with the staff to continue to build upon the Innovation School status and vision and see where that takes us.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Principal Putnam?
I just want to say that Max is sad that his first preschool teacher gets to be the principal and he doesn't go to school there anymore. And he barely got to have her as a principal in person, so.
It's been so nice to see the fourth graders kind of leaving Discovery School and getting to see them as they're stepping up to the middle school, since I had so many of them as preschoolers.
That's terrific. Anything else from the school committee? All right. Well, thank you again for joining us, Principal Putnam. I appreciate it. Best of luck as you move forward. Report back to us as necessary.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Casey.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, so let's move into the school resource officer update. The S R O, that's item B. I think, you know, this is usually the Superintendent Harper show when we get to this portion of the meeting, and this is no different. Jordana, can you give us an update on this? We did hear some from health and safety. Is there anything you'd like to add?
You make it sound so much more interesting when it's the Superintendent Harper show. Wait, before you guys go on, can you hear me?
Oh, I'm sorry. Member Ekstrom, I forgot about your budget update. She had to, yeah, remote stuff. You know how it is. You're back.
That's all it is.
I am so, I am so sorry. So we're going to move back. Thank you for interrupting me. I am managing the laptop, my phone. I got the iPad out. I've got the dog barking. Yeah. We're all doing the best we can. We won't talk about my son's issues tonight. We'll, we'll just move on.
I mean, we can, but probably, let's get it off the record.
Budget and Finance Subcommittee Report, please. Member Ekstrom.
So I just wanted to speak a little bit. Said is what we've been talking about. And every call we have, we, what about this? What about that? Information, kind of figured.
Member Ekstrom, I'm going to interrupt you. You're cutting out quite significantly. We can't really tell what you're saying.
Oh, dear God. How about now?
That seems clear. Why don't you try again?
Hello?
Why don't you try to keep going?
Okay. So the budget meetings have essentially been, I don't know, let's hurry up and wait. For all the reasons that Jordana highlighted, we did speak some about the reductions in force and our overarching concern was what happens? Should we get money and how do we get these people back? Because there was no easy decision anywhere to be made, and there isn't any easy decision even after this. It's only going to get more difficult. And we are going to need more teachers. We're going to need more. We're going to need more than we had previously. So how that's going to happen, I don't know. And, but that is something that we talked about in the budget committee. We also spoke a little bit with T M S and Andy, who is our new business manager service. I'm saying that he's our consultant. And spoke a little bit with him and asked him to follow up on a few things. And we will hear from him, I'm sure, at a later date. But the budget committee is meeting. Unfortunately, we're all have our hands tied. I'm good.
Thank you for that. Any, any questions from the school committee members about budget discussions? Anything, member Wall, you would add as well? I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you have anything to add.
Yes, I would like to add the fact that we're still working on this, from the superintendent's budget. And as the newest member on the school committee, I have been told repeatedly that we don't have a school committee budget. It's the superintendent's budget. And I'm not sure at which point the school committee will look at the budget and approve it, but that has not happened at this point.
Member Wall, are you specifically talking about changes that are being made to, to bring it down to the mayor's budget?
Yes, I am.
I see.
We have not had the opportunity to vote on any of the changes. I would just like to put that on the record.
Thank you for that. Any other further comments from school committee members about the budget or Superintendent Harper? Would you like to comment on any of that?
Sure, Chair. I, I just want to echo a bit what member Wall said. Because this is in development, our last meeting was prior to those RIF notices. So our, our business manager is not on the line with us tonight. But when, our first target was the contractual deadlines. And then there are further reductions that we are going to recommend that may be administrative cuts, for example, other non-classroom. They don't necessarily have the same deadlines. But our entire goal is looking everywhere in order to bring back and preserve those classroom teacher positions. So that entire budget proposal will come back to the committee and saying this is, this is the balancing to the mayor's budget. If there is a further series of cuts based on state aid, you know, then we're in a, in a whole different scenario. And again, the Budget and Finance Subcommittee will need to further weigh in about the, the strategy in that scenario as well. So in other words, we're in the final stages of making these reductions to the mayor's budget at this time. And then that entire document has to come back to the school committee because it is a significant reduction of the 1.8 million from the school committee's last budget as it was passed to get from the school committee budget to the mayor's budget. So that will come back to the committee.
Thank you for that. And I do want to note that member Wall does not speak very often in meetings, but whenever she does, the next comment is always, member Wall has a good point. So we need to, we need to listen to her. I appreciate all of that.
I agree.
All right. So let's, I have forgotten completely where we were. Were you new business B, school resource officer? The dog's telling me that's where we were. Is that right?
Can I just inquire, has member Hollins joined the call?
Let's take a look.
I saw a 603 zip code, area code.
There is a 603 that is muted. Member Hollins, have you joined us? You unmute and give us a little roll call?
Maybe someone else.
Yep. I don't hear anyone. Thank you, though, for checking. Okay, so now I'm remembering where we were. Back to the Superintendent Harper show and the school resource officer update. We got to laugh a little bit, people.
Is that like, did I hear circus and three-ring music going on?
Always keeping it interesting, guys. I'd like to just touch on the, the conversations that have been had. Member Karen spoke about this and health and safety. There was also a significant discussion at the town school meeting with the mayor and finance director. I've been in conversation with the chief of police and obviously the conversation here tonight. I'll, I'll just reflect back. I think most of this was said, but just to repeat it for anybody listening to this agenda item. As it stands now, the city budget does not include city-side funding for the school resource officer position. So in the police chief's budget that was passed to the mayor and then passed by the city council, there is no funding for the school resource officer position. That position has historically been split 50-50 between the school department and the police department. And over the last several years, we've had an M O U that related to training, de-escalation efforts, relationship building, and an effort to build relationships with students as a model, the school resource officer model itself. And our police chief, being a former school resource officer, I think understands better than anybody the goal of this position being about community building and supporting students. And so that position has historically been split 50-50. There is a state law requiring school districts to appoint a school resource officer. However, given the funding situation that we're in, the need to prioritize educational and classroom supports for students and the police department's withdrawal of funding on the portion that was typically funded by the city side, this is, it, it simply makes sense at this point to not fund also from the school department's side, given the loss of educator staff that we talked about earlier tonight. And to have a school resource officer because it is required by law. But that individual would continue to work with the chief to determine how that role would be served. Most likely, that would be somebody on the Greenfield Police Department staff. There would not be anybody on site at the high school. And, and so the school resource officer position, as we know it, would then not be funded and not be present on the school property. Because this is a change to the last round of the budget that the school committee saw, I would ask for a vote of the committee affirming this action so that we can continue to make plans based upon that change and reduction. And I don't know if the mayor or others want to comment that we're involved with those, those discussions, but I hope I've accurately reflected it.
I do want to comment. Hi, Amy.
Is that Mayor Weidergardner?
It is.
Oh, yes. Please, go ahead.
I'm sorry, there seems to be a knock.
That's okay. You're fine.
Yeah. So as has been said across board here this evening, this is a terrible year for budget. And we're over, yeah. There could be a second round of cuts. It will be painful on the entire city budget. That includes schools and cities. But has also been acknowledged this evening. These are all really difficult cuts, one the same way that the school department did not want to have to cut some of the things they cut. The city, the city did not want to have to cut either. But we tried to make those cuts as judicious as possible. So I appreciate greatly that Jordan and has has advocated for the school resource officer, but understands where we're at. So thank you for that. And with some hope, it's always a little bit of hope. We'll be able to rectify this situation. If not this year, next year. So that's all I have. And we didn't necessarily want to do it. But as I said before, at multiple budget meetings, we had to make certain cuts. And they weren't necessarily the ones we wanted to make, but at the end of the day, we have to arrive at the final.
I appreciate that additional perspective, Mayor Weidergardner. Thank you.
Eddie, I have a technical suggestion that might help improve this quality of Mayor Weidergardner's sound.
Please.
It looks like there are two instances of Mayor Weidergardner on this call. So if you have two windows open with your Google, your Google Meet, you could close one of those windows. Alternately, if Lori has, or someone on the, from the, from the school district has permission to mute people, they could mute one of the instances of, oh, it looks like you got rid of it. Great. I think that will.
I did, Glenn. Thank you very much for that. I, I don't know what happened. All of a sudden, I'm sitting here peacefully listening to someone saying something about something, and all of a sudden, I just went blank. So I had to go in and try to figure out how to get back on, and apparently I opened an additional window. Now we have just one window open, and it seems to be improved greatly. Thank you.
It does, yes. Thank you. And thank you again for the perspective. We did catch, I would say, 90% of it, so. Your just was not, your just was not lost at all.
Yeah. Okay, good. Thank you.
So at this point, I think it makes sense to entertain a motion. We are being asked to take money out of the budget. So I would start with, let me make sure I get this right. A move to, a motion to zero out funding for the school resource officer line item and direct the superintendent to continue conversations with the chief of police on how we meet the legal requirements of the unfilled position. That was a full motion, if anyone would like to.
I second.
Okay, I got a so moved from member Karen and a second from the mayor. Any discussion from the school committee members?
I'm just curious, this is Jean. I'm just curious about why we're voting to remove this money from the budget when we have not voted to move any other money from the budget? It doesn't make sense to me.
So I think, that's a really good point, Jean. Like I said, we always say that after you speak. I think this one, I mean, from my perspective, this one's really clear-cut. And the funding on neither side is technically available to fill the position. And we also need to move forward with making sure we can fulfill the legal requirements, the state mandated requirements of that position when we don't actually have someone in it. It is not something that is like a change that it has to be reflected because we're cutting down to the mayor's budget. It's something that was erroneous, really, because we didn't know there wasn't going to be funding on the other side. I don't know if either the mayor or the superintendent would want to qualify that at all.
Well, I, I just wondered if we shouldn't be voting to remove the, the officer from the schools instead of voting on the budgetary implications.
That would be fine.
Superintendent, it's okay with that. Any other discussion around that from school committee members?
I have some comments.
Please.
I'll also say, while I'm making my comments, I don't know if someone else can help troubleshoot, but member Hollins is reporting by email that she is on but can't unmute herself, so.
I've been trying to help her out.
I just tried to get on by Zoom, so maybe this is better.
Yes, you're here. That's wonderful. Welcome.
There you are.
Thank you.
Okay.
Welcome, member Hollins. Please, member Johnson, go ahead.
Sure. I mean, this is being framed much in terms of, of budget discussions and wanting to review an M O U. And I just think it might be useful to put a, a broader frame on it. I think the, the reason it's really come to our attention is because of the killing of George Floyd by a police officer and the reminder to all of us of the trauma being faced by black and brown communities across the country. And with, want to acknowledge that I think the police department and its officers in our city are extremely hardworking, extremely well-intentioned. And I think that the, the interest of having police officers in the schools in order to help build closer relationships with students and help them to see police as people they can turn to when they need help to build relationships and the, the work that's being done to, with the police department on, you know, the school's approach to conflict resolution and de-escalation, cultural sensitivity, awareness of disability issues. All of that is really, really great. At the same time, I think that the, the state kind of law requiring a police officer in the schools needs to be re-examined. And I think we're, we're, I'm certainly hearing from a lot of folks in the, in the community about that. And so I think that, that we have to kind of acknowledge that that is part of the reason why this is on our agenda tonight and why, why we're discussing it. And I think that the, the budget, this is one of those issues where maybe the budgetary interests and our interest. where maybe the budgetary interests and our interest in how we serve our community and rethink how we go about things are lining up. So that's why I'm, in addition to the budgetary reasons, the substance of it is also something that I'm supportive of in terms of working with the police department to have a, perhaps have a school resource officer who's on call but not actually in the schools, regardless of the funding situation.
May I speak? Can anyone hear me?
Please.
And may I speak?
Please, go ahead, Member Exstrom.
Okay. I, so like Katie and Member Hollins, we were here the last time this came up, and we had a larger discussion about it. And I was pretty clear then, and I continue to be, although, you know, if I'm, if my thinking is inaccurate, then someone please point it out to me. My hope had always been that the SRO that was in the schools didn't have an office at the high school, that that person would be helping serve lunch or helping do lunch duty at one of the elementary schools one day a week, or going to do recess duty, or doing bus duty. Because that's where you would get to know families and kids and face could be associated. That isn't something that ever happened. And so I think the intention of what the SRO was to be and in reality was, were two very different things. And I've looked at a lot of, I've been reading a lot about defunding police departments this past week. And what they've found is when they have defunded them, and then they had to change their focus and how it was that they were working with communities. And the reality is, is they started doing things, basically doing more outreach and being in communities and doing things like that and getting to know everyone. There was in New Jersey, I can't think of the name of it, but their arrests have dropped by 50%. I mean, because the police department has a whole different thing. And the community has embraced that different feel. And so while I understand our not funding an SRO because we don't have the funds, and that's fine, I don't have a concern with that. I think defunding something because we don't like how it's working as opposed to figuring out what we want to get it to work are two different things. So that's my comment.
I agree with that, with both of your comments completely, that we're, that this should be a discussion of whether the person should be in the current position in the schools, not around the budgetary implications.
However, I totally get that we, however, I totally get that it makes sense that we not support, that we not fund those at this time. All totally makes sense.
Right.
Could I comment? Was that Member Hollins? Member Hollins?
Could I have a comment? I had two comments. One was, like Member Exstrom, thinking back on this, my recollection from the beginning is that the SRO would never be in uniform or wear a gun in school. At least, that's what I remember. And that I think the law doesn't allow the person to get involved in any kind of discipline. But I agree with Member Johnson, this whole issue of police and what they do anywhere in society and how they do it and what are the guidelines. It's really a lot to think about. In terms of the budget and a vote to remove it from the budget, I think going back to Jean Wall's comment, that we haven't really voted the budget with the decreases in it. And I think it's, looking at this holistically, when we get to that, then this SRO should come up then for how it's going to be handled in the budget. I just think we should look at the budget holistically. And I agree, it's a topic that needs discussion. The last thing I'll say about this is, one of the arguments when we talked about the SRO initially is that we have high school students that are in danger. They're in dangerous situations and nowhere to turn necessarily, no access to get themselves somewhere to speak to someone. And I think that was the initial idea, that students know they had somewhere they could go if there was violence in the home or something like that. But it's a bigger discussion today. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Hollins, sorry about the delay. Other comments from school committee members? It sounds like the motion we have on the table really misses the mark with, in general, what the will of the committee is. So we can try again, would someone like to propose? Do we want to, it might be easier to vote this one down and put a different one in place, but I'd happily, well, who was the, who was, who moved for it? Was it Member Karen?
Yes, I believe it was me.
So would you entertain a friendly amendment to have it better reflect?
Sure.
Or you could draw the motion without voting on it, and we could try a new motion.
Okay.
I'll just withdraw the motion.
Could, if there's no longer a motion on the table, could I just make one comment?
Please, go ahead.
I think that, I think that the school has really focused its efforts on making a community of learners where there are multiple staff who are safe, safe people for any one student, a guidance counselor, a sort of an advisory teacher, a principal, an associate principal. I think for many people, it's a coach or an instructional assistant. I think that the culture of the school, in particular, based on the restorative practice work and the relationship building that has taken place there, has made it so that, you know, not commenting on any other aspect of it, just picking up on this last comment about there are children who experience all kinds of traumatic things. And of course, that is absolutely true. But the school has worked very hard to make a culture where students can approach many different staff members and express that and get connected with a school psychologist or a guidance counselor or the appropriate support to best meet that need. So I just want to commend the school for its efforts in that regard.
Would you like a different motion?
We're, yes, we're waiting to entertain a different motion. Please, go ahead.
How about this? I move that the school committee prioritize discussion of the school resource, of school resource officer services when reviewing and finalizing a 2020-21 budget.
Motion's on the table, do we have a second?
Not hearing a second.
Not hearing a second.
Sorry, 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 I was asking a question, I was on mute. Does that motion make sense?
I was trying to make sure that we kept this as a priority. Not the money, but the discussion of whether we want it in the budget.
Yeah, just checking, did Member Exstrom second?
Member Hollins, can you read it to us again?
No, I was asking if the motion made sense.
Yes, I didn't want to imply that we kept the money in the budget. My motion was to prioritize the discussion of SRO services when finalizing the 2021 budget.
Shouldn't we make a motion to authorize the superintendent to continue discussions with Chief Hague on how to fulfill the state law demanding that we have a resource of an officer in the schools without actually having the physical presence? I mean, isn't that what we're discussing?
Well, it sounds like, Member Wall, it absolutely is what we're discussing. And it also sounds like, as, you know, as current events are reflective of this, there's a strong feeling among committee members that the issue is larger than just, hey, there's a state law, we have to do this, but we don't have the money to do it. So how do we fulfill the requirement? It's much more about, this really misses the mark in terms of what we want to be doing in our schools.
And wasn't the superintendent looking for our approval that she go to Chief Hague and discuss how to handle it to comply with the state law?
That's what the Health, Safety and Facility Subcommittee recommended to the school committee. So I guess, I've heard Member Hollins's motion. I haven't heard a second yet. I think what Member Wall's talking about is more in line with what we were talking about. I'm wondering, Member Hollins, if you would withdraw your motion and.
Yes, I would. I would, and I like the way Member Wall phrased what she was saying. And also, we do need to bring this up again when we are finalizing a budget. But yes, I would throw up my motion.
Member Wall, would you like to try to put a motion forward?
I move that we authorize the superintendent to have ongoing discussions with Chief Hague on how to comply with Massachusetts law regarding SRO in the schools.
I second that motion.
So that's a motion from Member Wall with a second from Member Johnson. And Susan Farber, before we discuss, I want to make sure you have what you need.
Yes, I do, thank you.
Okay, and any discussion?
I'll just say, for folks listening in, Susan Farber is our recording secretary. So Chair Poiroti was just making sure she heard.
Yeah, not some secret school committee elf. She's our, yeah, she's recording what we do.
She also is, she's also kind of our elf.
She is. So I'm standing, I'm like, well, yeah, it's just. I love it, I love it.
But in a good way, like a Keebler elf, but better.
Absolutely, absolutely. Like one that helps you make your Christmas gifts, that kind of elf.
Yeah.
I love it.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on, we can, it sounds like we can move right to a vote here, unless there's any further comment from school committee members.
I just did say something earlier, and I just, I really wanted to, with Member Johnson, that the spirit of the conversation is, while we appreciate all of the work and we think that the spirit of our school resource officer was to continue a continuity of community and safety for our students, that perhaps the reality is for some of our students having that presence is actually the opposite of what we would like to happen. And so that this conversation needs to continue about being whether or not you want that position. That's all.
Thank you.
With some ice cubes.
The mayor needs ice cubes.
Me too.
Don't forget, she's injured, she needs ice cubes.
Ice, ice, that's, it's doctor recommended.
Yes. Okay, Member Johnson, a roll call vote on a motion, please.
Member Karen.
Yes.
Thanks, Chair Exstrom.
Yes.
Member Hollins.
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, I'm a yes. Chair Poiroti?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Rita Gardner?
Yes.
The motion is unanimous. Carrie's minority.
Thank you all, that's really good work, really good discussion, I appreciate that. Okay, so new business item C, and anti-racism resolution. So again, you know, parallel with current events, I did some thinking over the weekend and a little bit of reading. And it seems like, excuse me, that it's important for our institutions to really begin making structural change. And one of the things that we can do as a school district, a school committee, is reinforce the values that we believe are critical for educating our students and for being a force for good and for acceptance in the community. We need to really affirm that the movement towards, towards justice, towards social justice, is critical. And I would like to make sure that we take all of this very seriously. So rather than just doing a resolution on the spot today or doing, you know, just a motion to say that we're against racism is not enough. And so I actually am recommending that the school committee take on some work related to this topic. And what I'm looking for, actually, is to expand on the district's anti-racist, social justice approach and to have actually two members of the school committee lead a process where we research anti-racism and what that means for curriculum for schools, for our, for any aspect of what we're doing in the schools. And that we work towards not only being publicly informed, but putting forward a resolution in the future that's adopted by the school committee that moves us truly forward towards a more just institution as a school district. And I would entertain a motion to that effect or to another effect, so we can begin discussion.
That was a large amount of information.
Yeah, so let me break it down a little bit, I appreciate that.
Can you give us a succinct idea of what you would like that motion to be?
I can, and then we could have that to work off of.
Please, Member Johnson, you want to give it a try? Sure.
Sure. I move to authorize two school committee members to research and write an anti-racism resolution for adoption by the school committee at a later date.
I'll second that.
What'd I miss, I was letting the dog out.
Member Wall seconded, I think, is that right, Member Wall?
Member Hollins.
Hollins seconded it.
Member Hollins seconded.
Okay.
Member Johnson, did you repeat that? I did not get that, this is Susan the Elf.
Sure. I move to authorize two school committee members to research and write an anti-racism resolution for adoption by the school committee at a later date.
Thank you.
I would like to speak to it.
Okay, go ahead.
Any discussion?
I'd like to speak to it.
Please, Member Johnson, go ahead.
I really want to appreciate you, Chair Poiroti, for having the idea of the resolution, but also the idea to not just kind of do something slapdash tonight. I think in anti-racism work, the how we go about things is as important as what we do. And that's certainly what I practice and teach and learn as I co-facility and lead racial equity work with nonprofits and social sector organizations. So I think what I hope that these two members would do would be to keep that in mind as they're researching, that the research not just be reading books or consulting educational leaders, but also listening deeply to the community. And I think we could, they could also fold in forums, as was expressed, the support for some community forums on this topic from the Health, Safety and Facility Subcommittee. So that's why I wanted to make the motion and again, appreciate your leadership on this, Chair Poiroti.
I'd like to second that, Glenn, you said it very well. It's exactly what I would have said, so.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
For, any further comment from the school committee?
I would like to. I have.
I missed that, I missed that, I couldn't tell who that was.
You've got Member Exstrom and you also have this Member Hollins raising her hand by video.
Oh, hey.
And now you're on mute, so no one can hear what you're saying.
Me? Am I on mute?
Chair Poiroti was on mute.
Oh.
Whatever you just said.
I wasn't trying to say anything, so.
Oh, I was laughing. I'm on mute because the dog is barking her head off outside. And I'm laughing because I am not, I do have my camera on, I am not necessarily. I am not necessarily looking. So I'm sorry if someone, it was a Member Hollins, if you were raising your hand, I'm sorry, I did not see that.
Okay.
What was the order, Member Johnson?
I think we got Member Hollins only because I was wrong. Member Extrem was not.
Okay. Okay. Member Hollins, please.
Member Perrin.
I wanted to say first that I completely agree with Chairman Chipperson that we need, every organization, every institution needs to have an anti-racism commitment and resolution. I completely agree. And if Member Johnson thinks the way to do that is to have two members work on it, I agree with that. Part of my background is in change theory. How do you actually change institutions? And I don't think, I think the resolutions are very important. I'm not sure that because we take a resolution, it means there's a change in our school. So what I know to be important about making a change in schools, particularly on social issues, and it's one of the reasons I have lobbied that we have $5,000 in each school for library materials. It has to do with enculturation, the knowledge that the resources we have for students, the materials we use for teaching, in addition to what we say, it encultuates students. So we need to look at our libraries. Do we have books with main characters of people from different races? Do we have books that represent the resolutions we want to take? And we need an inventory of the materials we're using in social studies and civics. What are the actual materials we use? What are their dates? And to make sure we have current materials. And then with teacher training, that's how you bring about the change we want by the resolution we have. So I would love to see those things taking place so we know what are the actual materials we're using every day with children? And do they see role models and different types of families, different types of races doing important things? Thank you.
Could I comment, please?
Please, go ahead.
First, I really appreciate and applaud the committee for wanting to undertake some kind of resolution in a thoughtful way. Of course, we have a policy on this, but I see the committee's effort here as trying to be a little more in-depth, a little more specific to the needs of the Greenfield community, and to really tailor a statement that reflects what this district's approach will be and how to undertake long-term change. So I really appreciate your leadership on that. I just want to touch on a couple of things. What I would like to avoid is studying too much in a way that actually prevents action. I can tell you tonight, we don't have enough books reflecting students of color. We just don't. Because we don't have enough funding for our libraries, every year we say we should increase our funding for our libraries. We need to do that. So I would wholeheartedly see the funding that this committee didn't yet move out of the School Resource Officer line, because that's also been sort of tabled for discussion. If there was a pot, any pot of money, doesn't have to be that pot of money, if any pot of money were freed up, then I would love to see that dedicated towards this purpose. We've been having this conversation at the district level, and today I sent out to all staff five of some of the key commitments that we need to double down on and undertake and really commit to. This is about action. So at the committee level, you all are looking at a broad statement, and I think it doesn't need to get so much into the specifics of what actions is the district going to take because there are many. And and there's a lot we could be doing. There's a lot that we are doing. So the training is already in place, but it has to be, it has to be backed up with the action and the funding. So applying for grants for this is something that we do. But I do just want to make sure that it doesn't become prescriptive, but then, oh, that's a nice idea, but we wait for funding. So I just want to, I think the committee is aware of that, and I applaud Member Hollins' efforts to really focus on literature. It's tremendously important, and I totally agree. I just want to say at the beginning, I think if we can keep a high level about what the school committee is really interested in seeing, we're working with racial justice in schools and a number of groups that will help us advance our actions towards that. So I don't think that this statement needs to necessarily get into the, all of the details of the how and the why, but I think it does need to reflect what you all want to see as an outcome and what the vision from this committee is for where do we want to get our students and our community.
Thank you, Superintendent Harper. I think Member Karen also wanted to speak.
Yes, I think I totally agree that we need to create a resolution, and the best way to do that is not to come up with something instantaneously as a thing. I feel like, and maybe I'm wrong, Chair Poiroti, that really, it sounded like you wanted more than just a resolution. And in doing my own research, I found a lot of school committees have actually created advisory committees that actually take on this as a much larger project. They, there was one district I looked at that actually created an anti-racism day every month, for example. They, you know, we don't want to be prescriptive. We're not the ones making curriculum in the school, but as a separate committee, they were able to really focus on this, find extra revenue streams, reach out to community members who were willing to donate money separately just for this topic, really to be truly educated, not as, you know, a school committee member, but as a person, perhaps of, a person of color saying, no, this is actually what we need to do, and this is what you will see best serve our community. One of the things I've really been learning is that I need to step back and listen and learn. And that's true as this is a whole committee as well. So maybe I'm wrong, and I misheard that. And I do believe a resolution is extremely important. I just think maybe we're, we need to find something a little bit more than that. And maybe that's a sort of subset of a committee or advisory committee or a subset of the town's Human Rights Commission. I'm not really sure.
Could we? I appreciate that comment, Member Karen. And you're right, I was looking beyond a resolution, but I didn't want to scare everyone and try to vote to defund the schools. That seemed like it was a little more probably than we were ready to go for, even though it seems like doing that for the police in Minneapolis is, you know, an interesting start. It would get us some headlines. I don't know it would get us anything we actually wanted, but I am looking for real structural change, and I do think we need to start somewhere. And I think starting somewhere, part of the resolution piece, that was my initial thought because in being involved in in different forms of governance over my experience, resolutions call attention, resolutions can, you know, really inform where a body stands on something. And so I started there. But then, as I looked at examples of resolutions from school districts, there's so much thought and time and conversation and listening, Member Karen, absolutely listening, that goes on to put these types of resolutions together, that I think we need to, you know, do the work to actually identify where we can go to make the real systemic changes. So I appreciate you trying to get inside my head with that. Yeah, I am looking for more than a resolution, but I think we need to start with something like that. So I appreciate that. Other comments from school committee members?
Can I?
Member Wall?
I would like to say that, again, I agree with you. We've got to go beyond a resolution and that I think that studying, that there are so many talented people on this committee that have experience in this field will give us a much wider discussion than just a resolution, because I think we all agree that we are against racism, but we want to know what to do to stop racism and discrimination in the school system.
Just so you know, Member Hollins, I don't think Chair Poiroti can see when you raise your hand, so vocally is probably important.
Member Hollins, go ahead.
Is it possible that our motion could include establishing a subcommittee? We, we don't have any goals as a school committee. It concerns me. So could we establish social justice as a goal and establish a subcommittee to pursue that? Not to tell anyone what to do, but just to take up this issue seriously, look at what's current, what other schools are doing, what we're doing, and and really have a committee that focuses on all forms of social justice, including racism, how how we activate that in our schools and continuously improve on what we're doing.
Are you thinking ad hoc?
Well, we have subcommittees and we have advisory committees. And I would support a subcommittee on social justice as a goal for the, this in the coming year.
Thank you for that. Can I get the, I want to see where we're at relation to Member Hollins' comment. Susan Farber, do you mind reading the motion to me again?
The motion is to authorize two school committee members to research and write an anti-racism resolution for adoption by the school committee at a later date.
So, thank you for that. So if we have that as our motion, I'm thinking out loud here, are we not taking enough of a first step, not taking the right first step? Or are we comfortable with that as a starting point right now? I'm not ignoring the suggestions for doing more and the systemic change in the Social Justice Subcommittee. I think we need to do all of those things. I'm trying to figure out what we actually put into motion, pun intended, starting tonight.
Could I speak?
I'm not sure who that is, but go ahead if you're a school committee member.
I am.
Mayor Weidergardner, go ahead.
I just, I think you're, I think the motion that's on the floor is an appropriate one. It is manageable. Lord knows, we all are extremely busy trying to navigate our days. I think it's very manageable. I think it leads us in the right direction. And at the point in time when that resolution comes forward, it might be the more appropriate time to discuss what what next steps could be, what the real, what the real end goal is. I agree with both Member Wall and Member Hollins that, you know, there are many differences, and certainly Chair Poiroti, there are different, there are many structural things that we could do. I'm not sure another subcommittee is one of them. I think we could be a little bit more creative than that in terms of what structural change we're doing. I appreciate that Superintendent Harper has already started down that path based on the emails that I was reading today with her, I'm going to get the term wrong, restorative X Y Z.
Restorative justice.
There we go. Well, no, restorative isn't restorative justice. It's a restorative something else, but.
You're right. We call it restorative practice or restorative justice, and they do the restorative justice circles, and we've been working with Strong Oak and Milwaukee and Balance Curriculum. You're right on the money.
So, okay, good. So I'm just saying, I think this, I think this is an appropriate motion for this time. What it doesn't, I think we are probably going to need another motion that says who the two members are, or maybe it's just up to the chair to decide that in a point. And if everybody's comfortable with the chair doing that, then I think we could vote this motion tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Weidergardner. Other comments from the school committee? All right. So at this point, I think we should move to a vote and try to see if we can get this passed as a starting point, recognizing there's so much more work to be done. Member Johnson, can you do a roll call vote for us, please?
Member Perrin.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Extrem.
Yes.
Member Hollins.
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, I mean, yes. Chair Poiroti.
Yes.
Member Wall.
Yes.
Mayor Weidergardner.
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Wonderful. Thank you. That's a good starting point. We'll discuss who the two members will be, and we'll do that in short order. And for tonight, we'll just know that it will, two of us will work on it. All of us are welcome to give feedback, of course, as we move forward with the process. And let's see, any other business from school committee members at this time or from the superintendent? Okay, so I want to thank everyone for their thoughtful comments today, for people who are still on the line from the public. I really want to thank the four folks who stepped up and made public comment tonight. Since we've been doing remote meetings since March, this is the first time anyone's done remote public comments, so good for you all. We do want to hear from you, and we welcome it at any meeting. So thank you for that. I now will, let's see. So let me talk through this. We do have an executive session for school committee members only that we need to do. We will not be coming back into the public session. Am I correct about that, Superintendent Harper? I don't think there's a need to come back.
Correct.
Okay. So we will end this, and we will move into executive session, and we'll take all the time we need there. Ha ha. I've got you all where I want you. So I will, we'll do a motion to move into executive session first, and then we'll do a motion to end the public meeting before we move into executive session. Does that make sense? Anyone?
Yes.
That makes sense.
Okay. And I've told, I have to remember to read while we're going into executive session, we have two reasons on here for tonight, exemption number two and exemption number three. Both, exemption two is regarding strategy for preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, and exemption three is for strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. And those are the two reasons we're using tonight. I'll entertain a motion now to move into executive session.
I move we move into executive session after a five-minute break.
After a five-minute break, and I've got a second from Mayor Weidergardner. And roll call, please.
Member Karen.
Yes.
Vice Chair Extrem.
Yes.
Member Hollins.
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, yes. Chair Poiroti.
Yes.
Member Wall.
Yes.
Mayor Weidergardner.
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously for entering executive session after five minutes.
Okay. And now a motion to close the public portion of the meeting.
So moved.
That was Jean Wall and a second by Member Johnson. Roll call vote, please.
Member Karen.
Yes.
Vice Chair Extrem.
Yes.
Member Hollins.
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, yes. Chair Poiroti.
Yes.
Member Wall.
Yes.
Mayor Weidergardner.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned.
Okay, we'll see. All the school committee members in executive session in five minutes. Thank you to everyone in the public who participated tonight. Have a good night.